Okay, let's have public comments.
Okay, first up is Tammy Bukar.
Hello. I'll get my notes here. Hi, my name is Tammy Bukar, and I'm a medical cannabis patient. I'm here today to speak on behalf of all the patients and caregivers in Wildomar and the surrounding communities, and urge our city to offer its residents an option to get medical cannabis locally. Our city has a wonderful opportunity at this time to embrace a growing movement that is not going away, and it helps our local residents access much-needed medicine in a positive and revenue-generating process. Sorry. Let me give you a little bit of background about my medical problems. I've been plagued all my adult life with major problems that are debilitating in pain level. I suffered daily from pain for almost 30 years. I'm also a two-time cancer survivor, and I use medical cannabis daily to ease my pain. There's no other big pharmaceutical drug out there that will do that, and everyone that I've tried has also caused more physical pain and ailments to my body. And I'm standing here today because it works. I've reduced all my other medicines and only use cannabis to cool everything. Of course, I was hesitant at first, and that's because of the negative stigma of cannabis. As a patient, I was also scared that I'd lose my job, but it didn't matter because I wanted the pain to stop. I wanted to be able to be a functioning human being again, and to be able to stand up here and talk to you normally without being crying on my bed in pain. The only problem that I see is the availability locally in our community for cannabis that could generate our city with much-needed revenue. The only thing that I'd like to see is -- let me get back on track here. This is why I'm here today, to fight for our city. With the proper regulations and ordinances on the books permitting cultivation and sale -- there's a difference between cultivation, sale, and production, but with cultivation and sale of medical cannabis in this city, it will not only be on the right track to have local patients legally get their medicine locally, but not have to drive to other cities and waste their time and money to find quality medicine. Plus, the money from the sales of cannabis and the permits will also benefit the city. As a resident, cannabis is here to stay. I hope that we can all come to an agreement and say that this issue is not going away. If anything, it's only going to be more prominent in the mainstay of the community.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's it. Thank you.
That was all I had to say. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next speaker is Ken Maes.
I encourage the council to continue on the path to develop a proper ordinance allowing for the growing, production, and sale of marijuana in the city. With changes occurring in Washington where there are no less than six pieces of legislation having been introduced, some to remove marijuana from the Schedule I drug list, H.R. 1227, which has support from both parties, H.R. 1810, which allows businesses to deduct the expenses like any other business, H.R. 1820, Veterans Equal Access Act, H.R. 1823, 2441, the list goes on and on. The change is coming. If Wildomar fails to enact an ordinance allowing for controlled and orderly marijuana business, surrounding cities like Paris will reap the benefits. Once people start going there, they're not coming back here. If this city should continue to ban marijuana, then the city should also ban the consumption of alcohol on anti-city property and all city events. Thank you.
Next speaker is Gina Castenon, and she has minutes donated by Ruben Castenon.
Good evening, council, staff, and community members. I am still for a comprehensive ordinance allowing recreational and medical marijuana in the city limits of Wildomar. The reasons the staff has laid out, which are, again, I say, leaning towards the negative instead of more of the positive effects that it could have for the city and its residents. The unnecessary survey, we've already had a vote of 53 percent of the people of Wildomar, and those people, I'm sure most are consumers. Like the lady said previously, there aren't very many places to go get tested, safe cannabis for medical-only now. Recreation, of course, was going to come in 2018. The issue of the money, this is what a city does in business. You make ordinance. That is the beast of your business. It's nothing extraordinary. It's just like the other ordinances you have on the book. Ordinances can be amended as 2018 goes through. You'll have plenty of time to process applications and start generating revenue to cover the costs of -- offset the cost of what the city would incur. Ordinances make people safe. Most law enforcement, when you talk privately within the community that lives here in Wildomar, will say that they are for ordinances. They do make people safe. That's what laws are for. And just like the lady said, alcohol or cigarettes, are we going to now ban those as well? Okay, the state has spoken, and the residents of Wildomar have spoken. If you continue this urgency ordinance and continue to just put it away for another day, it doesn't help our community at all. Everything still continues to go. You're going to have more cost on your police because of the ban. There is not hardly anybody here, as there was seven years ago. Seven years ago, the city spent about $50,000 or more, and they did nothing. Seven years later, there's a lot has changed, and the community has spoken. Doesn't matter that we're in districts; you all represent all of Wildomar. If you, again, ban it, you put everybody immediately at breaking the law. Because no one's here, people that grow their six plants or 12, that's according to the laws from '96, you can have six mature plants and 12 immature plants. This ban that you have in essence makes people grow their six in their house. That's dangerous. That's expensive, and then that's more stresses on our city finances for police and fire. And then, the people that don't know, they grow their own marijuana because they can't afford it. They're disabled, or they're vets, or they want to know what's in their cannabis. And that state regulation is coming for people to know that they can get tested, saved cannabis, if you have an ordinance. If you have no ordinance, the black market is still going to thrive. High school students will still get marijuana. High school students don't get alcohol and tobacco anymore like they used to back in the day because there are laws that regulate it, and those same laws apply to cannabis recreational or medical as well. The reasons for delaying it and the special tax, the two-thirds that you want, what special tax would you -- what criteria would that make? Because you're going to spend it on something specific? So what would that specific thing be in order to justify the special tax? It has to be, even within the law, you have to have reasonable regulations. And reasonable or unreasonable would require people to grow their six plants indoors. They have to recreate the sun, and at 31 cents a kilowatt hour, that will price people out of getting their medicine, or if it's medical or recreational, and it's unsafe. And again, you're going to have -- if you do an ordinance, then you'll be generating money for police and fire. And then, not only will you get your 1%, 2%, 3% excise tax, you can do up to 3%. You will also be able to get the 1% from Sacramento, that for every city and county that does an ordinance, you will be able to get that 1% from Sacramento for your city to do it as you please. So there's multiple sources of revenue for this, and I really urge council to move forward with a comprehensive. And this will give you the time to vet it out thoroughly for the year and a half through 2018, that the state's still coming down with regulations. And if things change, that's how you amend ordinances. You guys do it all the time. It's just a matter of business, as usual, for a city. So I hope you listen to the will of the people and give them the consideration of their voice. And they have spoken, so I hope you respect that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Josh. Is it Maui?
Money.
Money. Oh, that's a name.
All right. Yeah, my name is Josh Money. I'm a resident of Wildomar four years now. I moved here from Marietta, and I love it here. It's a great community. My suggestion, obviously, I am in law enforcement. I do work, I'm partnered with the Office of National Drug Control Policy, and I urge you guys to read the impact reports that HIDA has put out, both the Rocky Mountain HIDA as well as the Pacific Northwest HIDA in Seattle. And my vote, obviously, I'm going to encourage you guys to defer. I think spending two-thirds of our general budget to create an election that could potentially vote it down is absurd. I'd like my voters to be more educated. I think they have a lot of education based on recent legislation, but we don't know how this is going to shake out in California. And I agree, being the tip of the spear with our limited revenue is maybe not the wisest choice, so I'm urging you guys to defer this. I know I can't sit here and say, "Don't allow marijuana in our city." It's just not going to happen. It's here. It's coming, but I want to encourage you guys to defer. Thanks.
Next speaker is Greg Langworthy.
First, I'd like to say that I really appreciate how the city manager presented this very clearly, and I think it's what he presented is understandable, it's clear, and I also think it makes it real sensible to defer. Let me give you my reasons why I would go along with that. Scientific reviews by our former president Barack Obama and the Food and Drug Administration and Drug Enforcement Administration, as well as drug classifications reviewed by federal judges, all have affirmed that marijuana should remain a Schedule I drug. They've got reasons for doing that. May not continue that way, but it would not have come down on the side of being a Schedule I unless you had good reasons. Schedule I drug is defined as currently having no accepted medical use and a high potential for abuse. I would come down on the side that it does have a high potential for abuse. I've been a school teacher, and I've seen the effect on students that use it. So this is why the federal government currently prohibits the use of marijuana, even though California does, the federal government doesn't. Scientists agree that marijuana is a dangerous drug for those who need it for medical uses. There are currently three FDA-approved drugs, including THC, Maranal, Cessarete Syndros. I'm not an expert on any of those, but they're all alternatives to smoking marijuana for those who have a legitimate medical need for it. So the question is, should Wildomar encourage the growing and use of marijuana? And I think that's the issue, producing it and then selling it, growing it and selling it. Job of the city councils to adopt policies that are good for the people of our community. By allowing businesses to commercially grow and sell marijuana, the council would send a message to our citizens that they believe, that you believe, that marijuana is beneficial to the people of Wildomar. And the growing marijuana is no more harmful than growing or selling cotton or wheat, which I think is definitely not true. Colorado's already gone down the road that you're considering. The consequences to their culture have been increased use among teens, resulting in educational problems in schools. Also, in some towns, the sale of marijuana has replaced other businesses as a means of income. And though it's brought in increased revenue to local governments, it's also increased the costs of law enforcement, drug-related driving accidents, loss of work productivity, and a spike in gang-related crime, which is another good reason to defer, to see what the consequences of marijuana use have been in other places that have already started down the road that you're considering. Would we want our own children using marijuana? I think that's a good test case. Do we think the use would add to the quality and value of their lives? Do we think this is part of God's plan?
Time's up, sir. Yeah, thank you.
Next speaker is Veronica Langworthy.
I'll just finish Greg's words. So would we want our own children using marijuana? Do we think the use would add to the quality and value of their lives? Is it really good for the people of our community? Set a good example for our city and other cities also. The actions you take set examples for both our citizens and other city councils. So I encourage you to continue your existing prohibitions against marijuana businesses and defer it. I'm going to -- I'll cite stats from Colorado about the percentage of cities, local jurisdictions. The majority have prohibited or have a moratorium on it. This is according to the Colorado report that 24% have allowed marijuana, 64% prohibit it or have a moratorium, 11% have not addressed the issue. That's the bottom line. Here in Riverside County, there's an ordinance 925 for the unincorporated areas of Riverside County. Qualified patient or primary caregiver must reside on the parcel, make cultivate up to 12 plants. If cannot meet all requirements of Section 12 in ordinance 925, then provisions of Prop. 64 govern cultivation. They have to be 21 years old, plus they can have six plants indoors or in a fully enclosed, locked area, and no other marijuana plants may be grown on the property. And additionally, all marijuana dispensaries remain prohibited in unincorporated Riverside County under ordinance 348. And I just wanted to remind you all, no to Weedomar. Hey, I didn't make comments while you were speaking. I'd appreciate the same.
Only you address us.
Sorry. So the stats are from Colorado, that out of 272 municipalities, 234 have taken action, 25% allowed, 75% prohibited, or there was a moratorium. Counties, 37% allowed, 63 prohibit or a moratorium. On the local jurisdictions, of 296 local jurisdictions, 27% allowed, 73% prohibit or moratorium. I would urge you to delay. If the people of Colorado, just through evidence, showed that it wasn't necessarily good for everyone in the state, I would also like you to feel not pressured to enact an ordinance here today. So I'm asking you not to feel that pressure. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Arnold Mathias.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time today. I've been hearing everything. I think that Wildomar right now is already behind the ball in dealing with medical marijuana. Marijuana in total, California has already voted for it. This is something that's inevitable. We're not going to be able to stop it. Colorado, number that didn't get brought up here, $1.4 billion in taxes last year on marijuana. I looked at the city manager's presentation, and there are startup costs, but the revenue that can be made by taxing and regulating and putting ordinances in place, that's important to have it in place before the state comes into effect in January of 18. The money that can be made would surpass what the startup costs would be. Education, the state's already set aside money within the budget in dealing with taxes for marijuana for law enforcement, for education. And when it comes to our own children and dealing with medical marijuana, people do need it. It's obvious. But dealing with our own children, the biggest thing is education, and that starts at home. Educational marijuana, alcohol, alcohol still is, in terms of related depth on the highway, is still DUIs basically, alcohol. Anything can be abused, so it's about education. Surrounding cities and counties have already started. Orange County have moved forward, commercial businesses and dispensaries of such. Nearby Paris has started, Cathedral City. These cities have already put ordinances in place. We have citizens here who need it, and the city can benefit from it. The city, the revenue that can be brought in, what can definitely help in terms of adding more law enforcement if need be. Those things are in place, but if you continue to defer and wait and wait and be conservative, what's going to happen is these businesses are going to be in place, the cities are going to be collecting these taxing revenue, and that by the time you implement something that's ready to go, it'll be flooded. I don't think there'll be much that, in terms of starting up and making money, that can be made. With California, citizens already approving this, like I said, this is inevitable. It's a matter of putting your own ordinances in place and regulating it, and I think that would be more beneficial than the conservative. The biggest risk in dealing with this business is not taking one. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cleo Duran.
My name is Cleo. I live here in Wildomar. I've been here for about three years. Fantastic place. Husband's military, I've been everywhere. Promises have definitely been the best. I am a corrective exercise specialist. For those of you who don't know what that means, I work mostly with people who have some sort of medical condition, whether I'm working with them for weight loss, rehabilitation, pain management, heart conditions, you name it, I've probably already worked with them. The main thing that I see is they come to me on pharmaceuticals. The pharmaceuticals have caused memory loss, they've caused dizziness, they're causing blackouts. They're losing their teeth, they're losing their hair, they can't even walk anymore. They've become addicted to their pain medications. I help educate them and turn them on to the appropriate resources for the cannabis. A lot of them are completely pain-free. The pain medications that they are put on also irritate everything going on in their brain, makes them feel that they're in more pain than what they actually are in. Now, when it comes to children, yes, I have parents who come to me about their children, whether they have epilepsy, ADHD, any other medical conditions. They want to see their research. Parents are getting cards because their children need help, because no one is speaking to them, nobody is helping them. The more education that we provide to them, the better. I'm totally all for opening up door number one. It can make so much difference for everyone, and the amount of money that can be brought back to the community is going to make a huge difference. Just like any other opportunity that you take, there is going to be some sort of risk. Yes, some people have used it. Personally, I think smoking is the stupidest thing ever. I have people who use lotions, they use edibles, they make little special coconut oil that's infused, they put it in their teas and their coffees and things, so they're still getting the benefits. They're not interfering with the oxygen supplies that's going into their body. I personally also use it. I actually have Estelle Lupus, and I actually lost most of my hair when I was about 23 years old. I couldn't even take care of my kids from all the pharmaceuticals they tried to put me on. And now I'm able to help other people. So it'd be great for those resources to be here. I want to have a place that I can trust, that I can go into, that I can make sure that they are educated, so I can send my clients to them, so I know they're going to get all the help they need. As of right now, it's just me and a few other people who have some bit of knowledge, we're able to direct them in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Shelley Rumba.
Hi, my name is Shelley Rumba. I'm a Wildomar resident. I've lived here about 23 years. I'm asking the city to defer the door number two. I keep hearing all this about revenue for the city. Is marijuana really for the city? Is that what it's about, or is this about for medical purposes? Yes, I understand, medical purposes. I've worked with holistic doctors, and there's lots of places you can go get it. You can get it online. I don't feel that we need to have a store on every corner. I don't think the city of Wildomar at this time, we're a small community. We're growing, we're trying to get our costs under control. I think it's a gamble putting $250,000 out there for an election that can go either way. I just feel that, you know, I'm not going to say I'm against marijuana or not, health reasons, but I honestly, yes, it's out there, but these people that keep talking about it, they're saying they know so much about it. When I work in the holistic world, we can say, "Oh, we can heal you. We can cure you." And there's Kevin Trudeau sitting in prison right now because of his book. So down the road, I mean, where does everybody become now this expert at this? So where's the research? Are we going to, 30, 40 years down the road, we're going to find out what this has all done to people and how it's ruined it, and that's what's taken over? So that's why I ask that the city of Wildomar do some more research on this, put it aside, look at it in four years, let the other cities gamble, let the other cities throw their monies away, and see if it works for them. What do you have to lose? So I just ask that you defer it.
Thank you. The last speaker is Tom Rumbo.
Thanks for letting me speak. I'm a resident of Wildomar since 1992. I never thought I would come to a meeting like this, but if it's such a good idea, why aren't we gonna get our Marietta or these other cities jumping on it? And like my wife said, we don't have the money that you've even said to go and gamble on something like this. We have roads out here that need to be repaired, and if you want to look for a tax revenue creator, put an auto plaza in here, put industrial park in here. There's other ways that are more efficient, and what's this going to do down the road to our property tax? Is everybody going to say, "Oh, Wildomar's a pot city. I don't want to move there," when our property value goes down? We're already kind of looked at as a redneck community by a lot of people, and I think that this is just going to be a bad thing for our city. So I'm totally against it. I would ask you to defer it, or think about it, or do a study on it. And like my wife said, all these experts are just quoting other people's remarks, and like Orange County and LA County, they got a lot more money to play with than we do. So I'm just asking you to look into it further before you make a critical decision, and I'm for deferring it. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
I just would like to say we did receive emails, even a phone call. Most of these have been forwarded to you. I've gotten a few since I've sat down. We have Brian and Tina Fisher, who are Wildomar residents, that are against it. We have John Garrett, who is a Wildomar resident, is against it. Brittany, I don't have a last name. I don't know if she lives here. She is for it. Mary Hare, Wildomar resident, is for it. Courtney Kemp lives in Wildomar. She is for it. Peter Pacoan, who lives here in Wildomar, is against it. I did get a phone call from a Mike Masters. He is in favor. And the emails I have just received, Kathy and Kevin Page, they're residents, they're in favor. Ricky and Jay Miller, our residents, they're against. And Vitalia Gonzalo is a resident, and she is against. And I did get one more speaker. Joseph Mordio.
Good evening, council. Let me see if I can read my chicken scratch here. For somebody that said, "High potential for abuse," and he's talking about that like not for recreational purposes but for medical, can you guys say OxyContin, Norco? And since I've never had to use painkillers, I'm sure there's countless others. So that's kind of a, that doesn't make sense for me anyway. So imagine the year that the prohibition was repealed. Municipalities probably had similar meetings as this, debating the evils of alcohol for the benefits, and how to set up ordinance or to prevent liquor sales on every corner or to ban them outright. We know how that ended up. Nearly everywhere in the USA, you can purchase alcohol. We know the same will be true with marijuana in time. We know the same will be true with marijuana in time. The question really comes down to how and when. So how to do it and when to do it. I urge you to put the issue on the ballot as was brought up at the last meeting. Let the people vote on it. If it passes, set up some parameters, non-modus special tax. Probably do that on the same ballot. And then regulate it. If it fails, it fails. The one thing I don't want you to do is make a decision here that has anything to do with fears of possible potential litigation. Of course, you could punt here. Say you want to allow other cities to be the guinea pigs on this spear point. It's not up there. And then revisit this in a year or so. But to quote a great movie, "The Princess Bride," we are men of action. Lies do not become us. And Prop 64 has made marijuana legal. And despite the saber rattling from Washington, D.C., this will not be made illegal again. And just as booze was never made, re-prohibited again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's official. I have one big...